Turn my laptop off.
Yep.
That's a ten dollar fine, I guess.
I'm gonna hit the record button.
Oh boy.
Yo, that mic stays out all the time. Just remember that.
I want a different mic.
More to me.
All right.
Well, good morning, everyone. If you would, I'd like to call this meeting to order and if you would stand and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have a moment for public comment. Do we have anyone that would like to address the public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to our first point of business is the meeting agenda. And Andrew, I realize we have two amendments.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two amendments. The first is we're gonna remove item four A, which is the approval to hire the full-time facility worker. We're gonna add an item under number five to add an amendment to an agreement with the state of Minnesota for the Corrections Work Release Program.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the amended board agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Uh, second then.
All right. Any discussion? The first one you mentioned is going under which?
We're removing it from this agenda. We'll come back with it at a later date.
Oh, we're removing it?
Yes.
I'm thinking, well, it's already on there.
Wasn't listening, sorry.
Okay. All right. Any additional questions or discussion on amending the agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Agenda has been approved. All right, then we need to deal with the minutes from our June first meeting.
Of the June first meeting minutes, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I will second that, Madam Chair.
Any discussion on the agenda from June first?
Or bits.
Or, yeah. Moving on, come on. This is the approval of minutes for June first. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes have been approved. All right, then, we have an employee recognition. And it's for years of service for Gary Schaefer. For five years of dedicated public service to the Meeker County Corrections Department. And if you would come forward, sir, I'll present you with this.
Thank you very much.
Um, actually, don't forget to sign it. Oh, and I'll, I'll do that. It's kinda like when you get your diploma. Make sure it's signed. Let's use a black pen here.
They never give your diploma sign either until you turn in your cap and go.
There's always a cap.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. All right, thank you. Go. Yeah. Very nice. Okay, we did that and that. Next, I see we have Diane. Would you like to join us?
Good morning, Diane Whitaker from Public Health. Here to give you a COVID update, which seems to probably be the most positive update I've given on COVID in the last eighteen months.
Okay, right, very good.
So, looking at the data, if you're watching what's happening across the state as well as across the nation, we're certainly seeing a decrease in positive tests. As of yesterday, in Meeker County, there were two thousand five hundred and eighty-three confirmed and forty-seven probables for a total of two thousand six hundred and thirty cases. Since the first case was reported March thirtieth of two thousand twenty, we've had a hundred and thirty-three hospitalizations, thirty-one ICU admissions, unfortunately, forty-two deaths to date, and that seems pretty consistent with counties of similar size. But what is encouraging, our county positivity rate is down to less than three percent the last week. And if you look at the case rate, or case rate per ten thousand, we're at less than five cases per ten thousand. So that's certainly looking like we're trending in the right direction. Looking at the fourteen-day case rate, and that's a rolling rate, and that's the one that schools typically use to determine their learning plans, and that's still important for the summer because it's being used for camps and all sorts of school activities and also childcare. It peaked at sixty-five point eight-six the week of April ninth. Now, do keep in mind that there is a two-week lag, so the most recent week that was reported, which is May sixteenth to the twenty-ninth, it was down to thirteen point four-three. And given the data and the stats that we've been monitoring, it's definitely going to be lower again this week, so that's really good to see. Early on, we were getting a lot of requests from individuals who tested positive to have some assistance with essential services. Another good indicator, we have not had that request for probably several months now. The last would have been kind of in that spring spike that we saw. Last time when I was here, I talked a lot about the variant strains. They're still of concern, but there seems to be less focus on those. The vaccines all seem to be effective. And I did not get to read the whole article this morning, but Pfizer and AstraZeneca are now going to be doing further testing on the vaccines and their effectiveness against the strains and potentially adjusting them if necessary. The biggest concern with the variants is that they're highly transmissible, but they do appear to be, like I said, the vaccines appear to be effective against them. So since January, you know, the focus of public health and the healthcare system and pharmacies and anybody who is able to vaccinate was certainly on vaccinations. Public health has administered three thousand six hundred and sixty-nine doses to date. Definitely, the uptake on that has slowed. The statewide vaccination rate for the age sixteen and older with at least one dose is sixty-five point eight percent. In Meeker County, for that similar age group, we're at forty-eight point four percent. Early on, we had heard that the state's goal was to get to seventy to eighty percent. I don't foresee that happening in Meeker. There are pockets, areas in the state where they have reached that. It's certainly not an issue of access, but I don't necessarily agree that we're going to ever get to that point. If you look at our age sixty-five and over, they're at seventy-seven percent. What I found most interesting, and I just came across this data point yesterday, was that if you look at, in Meeker County, those aged twelve and older with at least one dose was forty-five point eight percent, and that was really high. I wasn't expecting that. It's good. I just wasn't really expecting that. So what that tells me is that parents of those children of that age are certainly getting their kids vaccinated. Now, locally, you can do that through the pharmacy if they have Pfizer vaccine, and then also the hospital has been vaccinating with Pfizer. So that's good to see. So what's happening with vaccines in the county? The hospital had been holding, and they still continue to hold vaccine clinics for the twelve and over because they do have Pfizer vaccine. And they are also vaccinating in their clinics on Tuesdays and Thursdays by appointment. Walmart and Family Fair continue to vaccinate. Walmart, the last I heard, were still doing walk-up vaccinations. Family Fair is walk up five days a week, and they have all three presentations, and you can walk in and just ask to get whatever you want to have. But we're all seeing some decline in the uptake. For the county, we had been doing very large clinics using what we refer to as the old CHS space. With the uptake decreasing, we have kind of revamped our clinics, and what we're doing now is doing a standing clinic every other week on Tuesdays. And then we're going into some of the smaller communities and doing an onsite clinic. A couple of weeks ago, we were in Watkins, and we did seven or eight vaccines. I think next week, we're going to Cosmos. Last week, we did a second-dose clinic. It was a hundred and some degrees that day. We did not do it in the CHS space. We'd moved it into what was the old band room, which worked. We only did about thirty-five people. It was a little tight. When we had some, a lot of traffic in and people waiting for their observation time to be over, it got a little crowded, but we made do. That worked. It was much cooler. You couldn't have possibly done it in the CHS space. So we're moving on. If we do a larger group, we'll do it there. But our standing clinics that we do every other week, we're gonna use the WIC immunization room. We've just kind of revamped the traffic flow in there and scheduled it on a day when it's not a WIC room, a WIC day. So the state's message early on was don't waste any vaccine, which created a lot of stress and pressure on the staff. Now, it's don't miss vaccinating anybody. If you have to waste vaccine, just, you have to waste vaccine. It's not a missed opportunity. So if you have one person walk up and you have to open a vial, you open the vial. Still very challenging and hard to do that. We're always looking for other arms because it's, we really don't want to waste, but that's the message we're getting from the state. We are anticipating that the Moderna emergency use authorization will be extended to twelve- to fifteen-year-olds, and that will give us the opportunity to vaccinate. And we also understand that they're looking at extending, well, I shouldn't say, they're doing research right now, clinical trials on younger children as small as age three. So there potentially could be some vaccinations of those, that population later on, but I anticipate the majority of those will happen with their primary care within the offices, where it should be done. And then we're also hearing that there's boosters. Don't know when to anticipate that, that there'll probably be boosters again, potentially this fall. We were fortunate to have a huge response from our volunteers, and to date, we've had volunteer hours at a hundred and sixty-one and a half. There have not been any recent funding updates. The most recent funding that we received was at federal funding, which was just over two hundred and eleven thousand. That's available to us for vaccination efforts through the end of the year. And then executive orders, you know, we anticipate that July first or seventy percent vaccination rate, that the mask rate, the mask mandate will just be, go by the wayside. And then yesterday, the governor announced, of course, that he's extending his emergency powers to kind of address the moratorium on evictions and also so that the mass vaccination campaign can still continue. So overall, I say we are moving in good direction. As a department, we're kind of talking a little bit about demobilization and moving away from the intense COVID response. And even though we didn't stop any of our programs, but getting back to face-to-face or more of a typical service delivery model than we had prior to COVID. But a lot of those things are still in discussion. So that's all I have unless there are questions.
So did you ever do any of the manufacturing plant, go into plants?
We were at Sparbo, we were at First District. We were in the business park at, or manufacturing park at Dassel. We most recently worked at, with Titania Crew, which is actually out of Isle, but they have crews out just north of town, I think it is, off of twenty-two. So we're working with them. Yeah, I have the list. There are several that we did onsite, but we had also a lot that opted to come in.
So that was my question. So was there a lot left when you got, that hadn't done it, or when you went into, say, a plant?
Yeah.
Was there a lot of people that?
They, when we went to Sparbo and to First District, they anticipated a higher uptake. But what they found is by the time we got the vaccine and were able to get in there, that they had, a lot of their employees had gotten vaccinated elsewhere. So I think at First District, we did about forty, forty-five, and probably similar at Sparbo.
So I heard a lot about an issue, the issue of tracking who had had a vaccine and figuring out who could do what. In other words, was there a way to track who did it at the VA? Who traveled out of this company? Was that an issue or none of it?
The only issue we had, and it wasn't an issue, we just didn't really understand it at first, is that the VA, because they're federal, they don't report into the state system. So we didn't know who within that was vaccinated and who wasn't. But otherwise, everything, if so, if you go to Wisconsin and get vaccinated, you're not gonna show up in our system.
Right.
But you can come with your card. We can enter it in so that the state or yourself.
But if it was in Minnesota?
It's trackable.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had heard there was some issues with that.
Well, we've had individuals come to us and say, I lost my vaccine card. What do I do? Well, we can look it up and recreate it for them, and anybody who vaccinates can do that for them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, they're saying that if you do some traveling, you should carry your card with you, which is, has that been mandated or?
I don't believe it's mandated. I heard that the airlines can require, but I just heard that through conversation. I've not read it. It is a good recommendation to carry your card, but actually, the better recommendation is to take a photo of it on your, on your phone and keep your card in a safe place.
I don't think, I had a friend that traveled recently, and she had her card with her and was never asked, and then, so what would they do if they didn't have it? Unless they have, unless they tell you when you book a flight, you can't fly if you're not vaccinated. I think that's gonna become an issue down the line. Privacy, et cetera, et cetera, so. Kind of like the Scarlet Letter.
Well, there's been a lot of conversation about whether schools can require students to be vaccinated, but as long as it's emergency youths, they can't require them.
It's always been a discussion anyway with all vaccinations.
And they could be, they could be a contentious objector, so they can make it part of that periodicity schedule and make it a, what would I say? Out of emergency use, just a general recommendation, but they can't force anybody.
So are we in for, what do we have to be at if you know?
Well, they said seventy percent, and that's what they wanted to see, but you'd have to wonder with some pockets being higher, some areas less, if we're not seeing that already. Just looking at the way the data is dropping. But then you also have to wonder if people are maybe getting sick and not getting tested. I've heard that.
I guess that testing is done.
Yes, yeah.
Minnesota's at fifty, did I write down fifty-five, fifty-eight percent, kind of general, overall?
Yeah, the state is at, age sixteen and over, they are at sixty-five point eight percent that have completed the series. Sixty-one percent have, no wait, sixty-eight, sixty-five point eight have at least one, sixty-one percent have completed. So, I mean, we're a little behind that, but if they look at the state average and get into that seventy percent, or July first, whichever happens first, the mask mandate will go away.
Now, for children, they can only get it if they're twelve and over?
There's still working on the younger ones, and do they get a one or a two-shot deal? They get a two-shot.
Is it two?
Has to be Pfizer, and I believe adults get like point five, I believe it's point three. I know it's a lesser amount, but I can't say for certain that it's point three.
Very good.
Diane, what was the county average at?
Our, Meeker County, for sixteen and older, to have one dose, it's forty-eight point four percent, and forty-six percent have completed.
Okay.
Diana, it'd probably be pretty fair to say that the young people that are getting vaccinated, their parents also got vaccinated.
Well, we're hoping so, yes.
The ones that aren't are having their kids do it.
Right, yes.
I think the population I read about is the women who have them, gone through child care.
Right.
Which I, I understand.
And we get those questions, and we just direct them back to their healthcare provider to have that conversation and make that decision. Any other questions?
Yeah, any other questions for Diane on her report?
Thank you. Have a good day.
Well done. Thank you, Diane.
I never want to miss an opportunity to thank you and your staff.
I'll thank the board.
For this, so pass that on.
I certainly will. Thank you.
All right. Joel.
I'm here this morning to propose a hire of Brandon Jones, Facility Assistant. At step, it would be at level A, A eleven, step one, at fifteen fifty-three an hour.
I make the motion to hire, is it Brianna Jones?
Brian Jones.
As a part-time facilities assistant, effective June sixteenth.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
All right, we have a motion. Any discussion? Any questions for Joel? This is for the part-time position now.
Yes, I'm born in part-time.
Okay, there we go. How many hours a week? Twenty hours.
Twenty hours a week.
So it is, it's like a half. Any questions for Joel? All right, then we'll take the vote. All those in favor of hiring, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brian Cruz, County Sheriff. Two items before you here this morning. The first is our two thousand twenty-one boat and water safety grant. This is our annual grant that we use for our water patrol. It's actually two hundred dollars less than last year, but we're still pretty consistent, so this is for six thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars.
I make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one state boat water safety grant contract.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
We have a motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion for Brian on this? Questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And the second item is the amended item to your agenda today, and this is our DOC work release contract. They're basically extending the contract we have into another year rather than do a new one. So it's essentially the same, they just change the dates and then obviously increase the dollar.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the DOC work release contract.
Right, do I hear a second on this amended item?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? This is a budgeted item?
Yes. Well, this is, this is actually revenue, but it is budgeted, yeah.
Any additional questions for Brian? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mikel Johnson, Human Resources Cardigan. And today, what I have for you is to approve extending the duration of the Meeker County utilization of paid leave due to COVID nineteen-related reasons policy. So initially, this policy was approved to go through June thirtieth, and that was June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. And that was at the January fifth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. So the thought behind extending this through the end of the year is that this opens up the reasons that employees can use their sick leave. And with going into the fall, we're not sure what that will look like for the school, daycare closures, and that's a big reason that people have used this. They have not used the other thing that the, the policy did, which was they, it allowed employees to get advanced time if they had exhausted all of their time and needed more time due to COVID-related nineteen reasons for sick leave. We have not had anyone use that advancement of time, but we have had people that have needed to be out due to daycare closures and school closures. So the, the thought was to extend this through the end of the year, once we know, so that we, we can be prepared for what fall looks like, depending on what that looks like.
I was surprised as I read this. So an employee, the school closes, I don't have daycare, now I have to burn my personal leave time, I have to burn my sick leave time. I just, I thought, oh, that's kind of a raunchy deal. And, and now we have to extend this, so now they can bank for future sick leave and P L to burn it for COVID things.
So they would still just only accrue what their normal sick time is? This wouldn't give them extra unless they already exhausted everything and then they needed some time for COVID. But what this does is it allows them to use their time for sick, so our regular sick leave policies don't allow employees to take time for the school closures or the daycare, so then they'd have to use their vacation time instead. So this just allows for them to have some additional resources, basically.
Madam, Madam Chair, a little background on that. Basically, this was a federal policy put in place through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty. It expired, and then we extended it as a colony for employees six months.
To June thirtieth, yeah.
Work through it and readdress. So we're, we're doing it in segments to readdress, but it's something the colony is offering to ease the burden if, if for anybody that falls in a burden situation.
Because we don't really know what's happening for fall yet.
This is the EOC Emergency Operations Committee.
The Policy Committee.
Policy Committee reviewed this and made this recommendation to extend it another six months.
It also is helpful for newer employees too that just don't have that much accrued too.
Yeah, what do you do?
What's the process? Can I just call you tomorrow and say my daycare is not available?
So far, it's been, it's been that way. With Meeker County having so few daycares, usually it's affecting more than one employee also, is what we're finding. So when a daycare is closed, I'm usually having more than one employee that's having that same issue. But we have requested some to bring in a note from their daycare as well.
Don't always?
We haven't always, no.
When we discussed this as an EOC, we recommended to the fam, to the employees to make sure that they have backup. And the unfortunate event that a daycare or school was gonna be closing, so we tried to encourage. I think we sent it out in a newsletter way back in like May, June, saying, look, you know, the county's still operating, there's still demand, statutes have to be followed, so we still have to man the station. So please reach out and find backup and have them be prepared. So it wasn't just like people were, oh, no, no, I'm, you know, don't know what to do. So usually, there were at least two options for backups we were encouraging.
And also, I mean, that happens if your child is sick and they can't go to daycare, you must have to have some.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
I only ask this because I'm by nature skeptical, but also because, you know, I've had some staff that have been supposedly exposed to COVID four times. Never had it, but stayed out of it. And the last time I asked for a doctor's slip, I got a form letter from the CDC saying this could happen. In other words, it was up to me if I wanted them to come back to work. So I just, I'm fine with this. I just hope that, we don't want any policy that we do to be abused, so I appreciate that. We're asking them to have some backup. Everybody who has children has to have some backup. This is unprecedented times, obviously.
And that was one of our discussions too, was the level of abuse, and we haven't seen that.
We haven't.
No, and I appreciate that.
And one of the requirements of the care is, was not only was there a requirement that we offer two weeks' leave, but it's leave that's separate from sick or vacation bank. So what this policy does is it puts a little bit more onus on the employees as well, because they're still using their own time. And, you know, they can use up their sick time, but then if something happens later on on the road, they don't have it.
And it expires on December thirty-first, and we go back to the rules of old, so it's a short.
Maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't.
I'll go back to the rules of old.
I, I would anticipate that depending on.
And for how long?
I think.
Month at a time.
One month at a time?
Ernold said he thinks it'll be till he's out of office.
But yeah, it's, it's, it's.
Which hopefully it'll come sooner than they.
I would anticipate that we would review this policy again late fall to see how things are going through the school year. If we're finding that schools are closing periodically, then we may want to look to extend this again for another six-month period. But this is why we're doing this in short chunks to allow us to review it.
I don't think the schools are really closing. I think we're gonna see this run very differently this fall, based on what they're burning on.
And then, and another caveat is the work-from-home agreements have specific language in there saying that you can't be the primary care provider for your children, spouses, you know, anyone. If you are in fact working from home and. If you are in fact working from home and putting in hours, so there's a protection there as well. So just because you're working from home doesn't give you the absolute right to watch your dependents.
So if you're working from home and your child can't go to daycare, you, you expect them to have something else in place if they're continuing to work from home from then. I appreciate that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
To approve the extension of the Meeker County utilization of paid leave due to COVID-19 related reasons until December 31st of 2021.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Is there any additional discussion? Any questions for Mikel? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of the extensions say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mikel.
Greg.
Morning.
Good morning.
Craig Schultz, Land Use Director. From the June 8th Planning Commission meeting, I've just got one rezon and one preliminary plat for the same properties. This is Al Rant and Michael Lee rezoning preliminary plat application. Location of this property is lot, government lot one, section 11, township 120, range 29. Kingston Township, it's on the southwest side of Lake Francis, or northwest corner of Lake Francis, I'm sorry. Parcel's 131044, parcel's 131045, and parcel 130176. You see on the site maps up there, familiar with the area up there? Northwest corridor. Two years ago, Michael and Al had done a similar plat on the lakes, lakeshore part of Lake Francis, just adjacent to this property right here. And actually 131044 and 131045 are outlots of part of that plat that he had done back in 2018, 2019. Now those outlots will be absorbed into the seven-lot plat that he's planning right now. On the right-hand side is the, is the survey of the seven-lot plat right there. That's how that looks. So the access point will be off of 735th Street for these, for these lots. For all the lots except lot four, which will be off of 330th Street.
And I read that a neighbor was concerned about that.
Yeah, there's a neighbor, um, that got Chuck. Teresa from the west was concerned about the traffic on 735th and the speed that it comes down that gravel road. So she's concerned. They don't use that access point. They access off of the highway there. But the got Chuck's are concerned about the speed of traffic that comes down that. And there's a hill there to the south of this property, kind of overhang. And people coming onto that property possibly could have some issues with. Yeah, so Al has agreed to put signage up, yep, or meet with the county and the highway department, see what they can do about some signage of that.
She satisfied with that?
She seemed to be, seemed to be. Yeah, there's quite a bit of discussion on that, actually.
Yes, that is a township road?
That's a township.
Township was going to be included in all of that discussion.
But apparently it has to go through, township would have to take it to the state to get signage for speed zone. It's quite a lengthy process.
You can't change speed and different things very easily.
So they pointed them towards the township and the highway department and Mendocino to get the ball rolling, want to get going.
Sometimes when that happens, I have a road in Darwin Township, I just have asked the sheriff to put the speed thing out so they know fast going, kind of slows them down, and something to think about when people.
And that's a tar road?
It's gravel. 735th is gravel.
Both Greg and Chris thought it was marginal agricultural.
Yep, I thought it was a good place for this. Marginal land, they called it. It kind of cut up little pieces of this and that. It's very hilly. A lot of it's wetland to the south. Looking to the east or looking to the southwest, it's kind of, it's kind of rolly. Sandy, pretty sandy, probably gravelly soil underneath. Yeah, in summary, it, uh, the rezoning part of it has to be for 1310176000, and that's the 37-acre parcel that isn't rezoned yet. The two outlots originally that were done a couple of years ago are rezoned, are one. So the rezoning part is only for the larger parcel. That's a 7.36-acre parcel.
His plan is to do approximately five-acre building sites?
Yes. Yeah, it's a little bigger than that. Look at the site map, or the survey.
So it'll be taken out of agriculture use, plotted off for sale for building residential.
Seven lots, yeah.
And that would then, of course, change the tax situation on everything. Okay.
Looks like, I kind of remember that from the last time. They won't have much of a view to the lake, will they, or is that elevation?
If I can back up. See if we can go back up to that view. The lots on the east part of this plat, lots four, five and six, I believe is what they are, will have views to the lake. Lots three, four and five will have views to the lake. And lot six will kind of, it's kind of in a, will have somewhat of a view to the lake. Lots one and lot seven, lots two will not have a view to the lake. They're pretty much blocked by the topography.
He's done several rezones out there, hasn't he?
Just, I know, it's just the one, just the other one. Started in 18 and finished up in 19, yeah. The two lots on the lake with the two other outlots that are encompassing lot four.
Okay, then in the summary that was out there, he had said that the township had an issue. Has that been resolved right there in the last, second to last?
The township wants that, it's going to be a public road because it serves more than four lots, which it has to be. They want to make sure they can turn a road greater around in there, in that cul-de-sac. So it might mean even wider on that cul-de-sac part than our standard 66-foot road right away.
But, but you said they have moved that out.
They have worked that out, yeah.
It's good to know they're talking about that.
Yeah, yeah. And that public, go ahead. That public road will come off the gravel road then?
Yep. 735th.
Because it's a fast turn there. That's, I'm sure that's what got Chuck, because I live on that road, so it's a real fast turn right there off 19.
And the county highway engineer didn't want anything.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
No, didn't want any more access off of that filled-in road, so. So he took that public cul-de-sac there, the access to the lots. Except for lot four will be off of 330th Street, which already is an access there to that shed, currently on that property.
In, in my point of view too, since it is in my neck of the woods, it's one of those situations where if you're gonna do a replating or something in terms of this acreage, it's probably just, I won't vote ve- very, I mean, this is one that I'd actually, not mine, but in the future, you know, I'd be a lot more stingy about it just because I don't like agriculture, but it is subpar agriculture, kind of close to the lake. It's something that we could get by in terms of this if we, to do some of these, you know. But that's kind of my view on it, you know.
It was also good to see, Danny, that it was Greg Jans and Chris Beach, because they're both heavy agricultural people that were out on the viewing, so it kind of follows exactly what you said.
Yeah, and, and like I said, our, my whole family is pretty familiar with this area, and it's one area, it's like, well, it is what it is. It's, it's clo- it's closer to the lake area. It's marginal land, because it's sand. It's, it's cut up, like you said, to the south. It's all swamp. As long as they have that road, the way they have it, in a public road, where you don't come right off to 19, I don't think it's a big, an issue worth fighting. That's my opinion on that.
Yeah, that's good that township is requesting.
Yeah. In lieu of all that discussion in the county, that was a requirement for sure, because it's like.
Because this will be a brand-new dead end for Kingston Township, right? This will be a new.
Is it, is it, it would be a dead end then?
It would be a cul-de-sac.
A cul-de-sac, yeah.
It would be a, a new dead end, and they have trouble.
No, townships don't have to accept it. They don't have to. They can't be forced to accept it. But we, as a, on the planning and zoning, we require at least to be public road specs.
Yeah, I, that, that is up to them.
Ultimately up to the township to accept that.
As a township road.
Because what we've done in the past is the township has say, hey, you can put the road in, but it's a road that those people will have to.
So they'd have to own it like a driveway and maintain it.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah, but they have to have it built at specs per county.
So they have to coordinate.
Yeah, so you don't, you know, yeah.
In case the township ever does take it over, they can get their equipment up and down if they want.
A lot of times, these roads will be by swamps and stuff, and the mart- land is marginal for building roads on in the first place. So you got to have the county specs.
So you're making, what they're doing is making a, building a 35-foot road.
66-foot road, yeah, with a 30, 35.
Yeah. Which is smart, yeah.
All right.
Well, hearing all of the ready innovations, Madam Chair, move to approve the preliminary plat application.
I think you need to.
Or rezon first. Move to approve the rezoning application.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Did, did we already do that? Okay, we're making, sure, all right. Any additional discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor for rezoning say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One proposition has been recorded. It does pass. Okay.
That's a two-part.
This had to be done as a two-part. Okay. Now, okay, we took the rezoning together, and now we have the next one. Would you like to present this one to us, Greg?
This is the preliminary plat of the seven-lot plat of Lake Francis Views. Lot is located in section 11, township 120, range 29, Kingston Township of Meeker County. Part of this property is located within the shoreline district of Lake Francis. If you move to.
I have a question. It says here Cedar Mills Township will be responsible for paying the necessary matching funds. They're aware of this, and how, how much would that mean?
Where's that?
Madam Chairman, you're on the next item.
I'm, oh, I'm.
You're one ahead.
Oh, I jumped ahead.
This is the same R B A as the last one.
Okay.
Oh, Cedar Mills. Didn't think I messed it up that bad.
I, I jumped ahead, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Appropriate questions for Greg?
I move to approve the rezoning application. Do I have to read all this?
Preliminary plat, huh?
This is the recommended.
You just approved.
Preliminary plat application for the seven lot plat of Lake Francis Views, right?
Yeah, correct.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, any questions for Greg? The second rezoning here? Questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That one carries as well. Now, what's next? Okay, I was jumping ahead, but you build here. Sorry, I scared you, Greg.
So as part of our annual report, in the past, we've always put together these blacktops. You'll have to let me know if you want them.
This is a nice.
It'll be nice on your face.
Good bathroom room.
But let me know in the future if you guys don't need the paper. We can put those together. I mean, we've got it in a packet. It's the same thing. First agenda item I have is final acceptance and payment for a township bridge on 590th Avenue over the South Fork to the Crow River. It was completed successfully by Structural Specialties out of Hutchinson in 2020. Came in right around the low bid. The low bid was $384,000. It was completed for about $379,000. It's funded by Township Bridge money, which is a piece of the state user tax, gas tax. Township bridges get a chunk of that money.
So two things, I was, it's kind of, it was nice it came under, but you don't see that all the time.
No, it's nice.
Was that appropriate in the moment time to get it done from August? I had no idea, I guess.
I, I think so, yeah. And they did request an extension and it was granted.
What was it, the normal, it seemed long to me, I guess I didn't.
Bridges are usually slow because there's a lot of waiting. You know, you pour the bridge abutment, and you can work on the other side, and then you have to wait for your cure time on that concrete before you can get on it.
So it's not unusual?
It's not unusual, and for whatever reason, small bridges tend to take longer than they need to also. But we try to work with our local contractors too, to make it work for them and work for us.
Turn out a good bridge, well done.
Yep.
All with the specs.
Yep, everything was good. Compared to what we were expecting, very low, low cost, low price, which is good for our state transportation funds.
I had jumped ahead here. And Cedar Mills Township is responsible for paying with the necessary, how much do they have?
So they pay the first $10,000 of engineering, and on a, what I, I call this a bridge, bridge, it's not a box cover, it's an actual designed bridge. We hire consultants because we don't have a structural engineer in the county. So the first $10,000 of engineering is the township, and then the state bridge funding picks up after that. And the first $10,000 of non-participating construction items, which is mostly abutment work. And then if you over $10,000, the Township Bridge Fund picks up. So it's usually $20,000. I will say in this case, it may be more than that because state rules only allow up to 25% of construction costs to be reimbursed on the engineering bill. And because it was such a low-cost bridge, the engineering exceeded 25%. So I'll be putting a letter together to the state to try and justify the over.
Okay.
But if not, the township may be on the hook for, I'm thinking, $30,000, so another $10,000.
Ooh, and they have that kind of funding for a budget like this?
Well, when I first went to them, they didn't realize that the Township Bridge money existed, so I think they were happy.
Yeah, they were worried about that first 379.
And I've been keeping them updated on this. They know that we're going to be against it with the engineering cap.
I'm sure they're.
Got a new bridge, yep.
They don't have very much blacktop road, don't they?
I don't think they have any.
So their maintenance costs are a little less than these townships with excessive blacktop.
I was curious.
Like banana too, that there's very little blacktop, you know, so the road, the bridge fund actually is pretty good.
Got these kinds of funds, so I thought, oh, my goodness.
Usually know what's coming to it, you know, for 10 years, that, that bridge is going to be coming due, and you're planning for it and stuff, so.
I was curious when I was seeing these big numbers, these big six-figure numbers, I thought, oh, Cedar Mills, yo. But, well, very good.
Madam Chair, move for final acceptance and payment for. Madam Chair, move for final acceptance and payment for SAP zero four seven, five ninety-nine, zero four seven.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, any additional questions or discussion? For Phil?
Phil, there was a page in here, I know I saw it, I read it, but I don't know how that goes. Word said how much the township worked, what their cost was.
And I'll, I'll touch on that, I put together a little.
No, we got it.
This PowerPoint wasn't in your book, but go ahead and vote.
Not yet, not yet. Any additional questions on the motion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good, moving on to the annual report.
So any report, there's no action required. We, we're required to put this report together as part of our process in the highway system with state aid and federal mons, money. So the annual report actual is in your packet. I put together a PowerPoint that you haven't seen yet, that should pull out some of the highlights, things to focus on when you're looking through the report and it might answer questions you have as well. The major highway construction that we undertook this past year, we had a CASA six reconstruct and then a couple of reclaim projects, that's where we grind up the pavement. We don't touch what's under the pavement and then we repave. And then that bridge, that number is the Cedar Mills Bridge that we just discussed, that was completed last year. Here's the CASA six construction location, we're southeast of Dassel. The red line is the road, that was a full regrade. We fixed that horizontal curve, improved some of the vertical alignment, added shoulders, it didn't have shoulders previously. And you can see that road runs through some open water and a swamp. So per mile, this is an above-average expensive road. That was a two-and-a-half mile project, the grading alone cost about one point six million dollars. The majority of it, about one point one million, was funded through federal funds, that was something my predecessor had applied for before I got here. And then we covered the remaining with the state aid funds, gas tax money. And it's being paved in twenty twenty-one, or it's been paved, but I didn't include anything for that because we'll talk about that next year. Just some pictures, if you wonder what it looks like when we're regrading a road. There's a lot of iron on the road to move the dirt that we have to move to widen the road, improve what's under it and fix the profile and the alignment. That's after the road, it's pretty much put together, they're what we call farming it, you gotta dry out the clay and the material to the point where it's gonna be um, the most compactable. You don't want it too wet, you don't want it too dry, typically that includes some drying, they'll disc it up, plow it up and then pack and pack. You can see we had some power poles in the road yet at that point. We had to move over a transmission line. There's the swamp section, I call it, um, a lot of sand, fabric to build that up and we did raise it a little bit, that road did go underwater. I think my first two or three years here, we raised it about one foot.
Is that right around that curve where you come out of Dassel?
Yes.
That's like.
Yep. If you take CASA six south out of Dassel and then head east, it's, it turns south here. Yep, this is just south of that intersection. This and combined with CD eight runs through those cattails, that is in the process of being cleaned, so those two together should keep that road above water. CASA nine reclaim, that was a short project too, between Bell and Cedar Lake. Reclaim, the northern portion of CASA nine was done in the past, they left this mile. Just a couple of pictures of the equipment used out there, on the left, you'll see the reclamer, that's what grinds up the asphalt and the gravel. And on the right is just looking at it from another angle, it's hooked to a water truck, you have to get your moisture content right to get good compaction. That one point one mile project was about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, again, state aid funds. We combine that with the McLeod County project on the same road, on the other side of the county line. Look at the finished product, it's a nice-looking road. Um, combined with that CASA nine project was reclaim on CASA one, it's three miles, south of Turnkey Highway seven. Again, the northern part of one had been done in the past and we have an upcoming project on the northern piece, but the south three miles was in real tough shape, so we had to grind it up. Blade, after they grind it up, use a blade to put it back, rollers to pack it in. That three-mile project was about a million dollars, state aid funds again. Picture of the finished product, it's beautiful. The bridge that you just approved final payment on, Township Bridge, South Fork of the Crow on five ninety, Cedar Mills Township. Um, it was damaged, I wanna say in twenty eighteen or nineteen, an old wooden structure, so that's what sparked the replacement. It became deficient, it was load-posted. Project on the whole, about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, mostly through Township Bridge funds as we discussed.
Do we have a lot of, do we have a lot of your desire wooden structure around the county?
We have about a hundred bridges on our inventory between township and county. I'm estimating fifteen, twenty are wooden structures.
How's the life of them compared to?
They vary a lot, because it all depends, they're mostly, um, from this era, they're treated in creoset. So it kind of depends if the piling or some, any of the under members start to rot. We have timber bridges from the seventies that look great, we have timber bridges from the seventies that are on a replacement schedule. So they seem to vary. Here's just a picture, you can see the old timber still in the water, the steel you're seeing sticking out of the ground, that's the new piling, it was about eighty feet deep on this bridge. Here's a picture of them driving the piling, it's basically a crane with a diesel jackhammer. You don't wanna be hanging around too long when they're doing that unless you have your protection. You can see the abutment on the far side for the new bridge is poured on this one. There's the completed structure, it was a beam bridge, so reinforced concrete beams sit on concrete abutments. No piers in the water, so as far as future corrosion and longevity of this bridge, much longer than any of us will be around, it'll be here.
What's the span of that?
I'd be guessing, I wanna say sixty or seventy feet. Between sixty and eighty, I know it's in there. So the annual report on the whole, we spent about three point six million dollars on construction this past year, you can see how it's broken out, mostly state aid funds, we had some federal money and then the Township Bridge money. Um, engineering that went along with that, about four hundred thousand dollars to execute that three point six million dollars. The engineering costs are above what we'll see most years because we have consultant fees in there for that bridge. Highway maintenance costs from this past year, we spent about one point seven seven million dollars on our state aids. And you can see, I pulled out some of the biggest items, snow and ice, chip seals, we put that in our highway maintenance on our state aids. Um, brush and weed control, that's our mowing, spraying. And then other is a big number, but there's a lot of items that go into that seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, culverts, that's our gravel purchasing, blading, shoulder maintenance.
So on the snow and ice, on a heavier year, what would that run?
Easily five hundred thousand. I'd have to look back, nineteen was a heavy year, I didn't look to see what we actually spent in nineteen, but I know twenty was lighter than nineteen. I can give that for you.
No, you're having to do it right now.
I will do it now, but I will get back to you on what we spent in nineteen, because that'd be a good example.
Give ten minutes at least.
Already behind.
Being kind today, I was like.
Township maintenance, you can see we spend about as much on the township maintenance program as we do on our county program. Um, gravel road blading is the biggest one, we have a lot of miles of gravel that the blades are outblading perpetually. Snow and ice removal, we spend about the same on the township six hundred and seventy miles as we spend on our two hundred and sixty. Brush and weed control, that's the other big item, and then about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of expense on other, those are just things that don't fit into those big three. So costs compared to receipts, on our state aid system, we get a state aid maintenance allotment each year. In twenty twenty, it was one point seven nine million dollars, we spent about one point seven seven million dollars on our state aids. So our state aid allotment, the gas tax covered our maintenance expenses on our roads. And these expenses, just so you know, they come through, we cost account everything we do. If a blade is running, it has an hourly fee attached to it and that all dumps into our accounting program. So these costs include our labor, our fuel, our equipment, that's in these numbers. Township maintenance, again, we spent about one point six four million, we received less than half million dollars in township maintenance fees directly from the townships. Thirty-nine thousand dollars in billable items, miscellaneous things we do that are billable for our existing contract. Then the remaining of that, the remainder of that township maintenance cost is essentially paid for through our county levy.
So does our, our apportionment for our maintenance cost for CASA, do we always, is there always enough?
It has been since I've been here, yeah, we're usually pretty close.
So is it by design or, or we don't know?
I think that's how, that's how Amaker County's been functioning for a long time, I'll say in McLeod, we couldn't keep up on our state aids with the apportionment, so we were spending levy dollars on our state aids.
So because we have so much of that, or, I mean, what's the difference, I guess?
I've touched on this a little bit in the past, but in my opinion, the equation that figures who gets how much money for, um, needs is what we call it for the state aid system. I think Amaker County is on the good side of that equation, as far as how long our roads last, the materials we have to build our roads without importing materials. We, we have gravel, pretty good gravel sources in the county, that saves us some money when we actually execute our projects. So I think the equation just works better for us than I've seen.
Cost allocation and a lot of different things.
Yeah.
Was part of that, because we have a substantial amount of CASA compared to some counties, correct?
Yeah, I'd say we're, we're above average.
So I, I think some of that was luckily today by design years ago, I mean, I think somebody in fact did some pretty good math.
So we don't have, we don't have county roads.
Yes.
That makes a difference, or no?
Well, the county roads would be funded only by the levy and the state aid system, I would say.
It does make some difference, you know?
I don't, it makes difference on our levy.
Right.
But I'd say the county roads would have been funded independently of our state aid roads and the systems, they're separate.
Okay.
I don't think they took any county roads and made them state aids because they're pretty strict about trying to add state aids to our system.
I've never quite, I still am always curious about how it works, every year I ask the same questions, probably. It's nice it comes out like that way.
Well, that's what I mean, I think somewhere back in the day, somebody did some pretty good planning with what the state was offering and what, whoever put this program together.
And who does, that's, so they did, the state decides that or did the county have some input in?
The way that the apportionment works, there is a state aids needs division.
Or what's CASA and what's county road, how, how is that determined?
That was.
We're getting back.
That was done back in the.
That's the discussion we always have about the main okay.
Yep, I think that was done in the late sixties, right before the county turned county roads, Amaker County turned county roads over to the townships. I do have a presentation I could give sometime on the state aid system and how the needs works into it and how the funding works. I guess in short, what I can say is they did it a while ago, tried to make it as fair as they could and they're trying to stick with the old system, that's why adding miles to the stated system, they've made a very difficult process, otherwise we'd put all of our roads on it.
We're on, we're on the blessed side of that equation, that's what I was getting.
That's what I'm seeing.
Somebody probably had some good planning.
We got, we got more roads in than you'd get done today, if you had to redo it today, you probably wouldn't get that blessing.
Possibly, and there's some balancing done because the metro areas, metro counties, we're all using the same system. So it's, it's a, it's a deep process, the way it's put together.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
And then there's, a couple of years ago, we were at a, I remember what that meeting was, a.
AMC?
Was it AMC District Meeting?
District meeting, yep.
Yeah, and I know Phil was there and talked about gas tax versus wheelage tax and different, I mean, there's been talk in the past that the gas tax eventually isn't gonna cover our needs. Is that what, is there any update on that, I guess, or any discussion, what are, what are you seeing from here?
I haven't heard anything new, I know the state legislature kind of quarrels over this, it seems annually.
Every year, they're doing it again this year.
At the end of the day, we need money to keep funding this system, if we're gonna keep with this system, the state aid system. And currently it comes from gas tax, registration fees, things of that nature. Long-term, fuel usage probably will start trending downward, well, when our funding source is tied to a downward trending program um, and costs are gonna go up, that's the problem. So I'm leaving that with the state, this is a state-run program, at this point, we're okay, we did bounce back in twenty twenty-one, we from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we were down about a quarter million dollars of state aid maintenance money. So this number you're seeing is quite a bit less than what we had the year prior. We were able to adjust our budget to make it work. I don't know what the fix is, and at some point, as we get more electric vehicles, those don't pay a fuel tax, I know there's other surcharges, but everybody that's using the roads should be paying one way or another, but I'm not gonna figure out how.
I was hoping, that's why, although I'm like, any tax, gas tax is maybe the most fair, because if you use more gas, you're using the roads more, I guess, but I mean, a lot of what we get for gas is taxed now, so the price of gases.
Well, one trouble with the fuel tax is, um, it, it's not indexed for inflation, so as costs increase, it's always been a fixed cents per gallon. And long-term, it, it opens the argument up every time it's not enough, what I'd like.
So they need to raise it, yes, for inflation then.
That's what I'd like to see, if they could somehow index it so it follows a trend, an inflationary market of some form so that you don't have to have that argument every five years, ten years, annually. Dedicate a funding source and have it adjust itself. Because construction costs, I don't see how they would go down, they're just not going to with labor and like, labor and equipment.
The sales tax charged at auto parts stores too, that goes to the same fund?
A portion of it, and that's somewhat new. I think it was two years ago, they dedicated a portion and then in twenty twenty, they pushed the remaining portion, it's not a hundred percent of sales tax, auto parts sales tax, but most of it now goes into the state aid fund. Or the highway, highway user tax distribution fund, I should call it, because that also goes to MINDAT, the D and R.
This electric car conversation is becoming more and more in the spotlight. It affects, of course, the ethanol industry and it affects environment, natural resources and, and the gas tax. I had a question on page five of your report, where it talks about mileage and the townships. And I figured out the math and it's six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents per mile. And that's the same, that's the rate that each township pays per mile for this?
They paid seven hundred dollars per mile in twenty twenty.
Okay, okay, because, um, I was wondering, is, like, like here, Harvey, I, I represent Harvey, this thirty-seven point three five miles?
Yes.
And to the two and a, then whatever the, the new figure was, seven hundred dollars, and the townships pay that?
This is what the townships received on page five.
What they receive?
That's their allotment from the town road account, we call it, so that's their money from the state gas tax. So they received about six hundred and eighty dollars a mile in twenty twenty and our bill to them was seven hundred dollars a mile.
And this number of miles, does that include their dead ends? That's all thrown in?
Yep. Yep, anything that's open to the public.
Ah.
There's criteria, I wanna say six or nine months to the, of the year, I think, is the criteria.
Okay.
For an open road.
Okay, so that's what, then I got a question on page nine. It says date acquired across the top bar there, January fifty-five and November ninety-nine. Is that? Explain that date acquired of various shops, because one down here is, is, um, like, oh, eight sixty-six and those are the, are those the actual years that those townships created?
These are county outshops, so we've got eight, eight shops around the county, so for example, the first one you see, Cedar Mills Building and Land, we have a Cedar Mills shop. We're not actively working out of that shop, but we still own it. So that's, that's what you're seeing, these are county facilities.
And it was acquired in nineteen fifty-five?
Yes.
Okay, because I was wondering, what is that last number, that's the actual year? All right, okay. So the county operates from these various, and the other, the other day, there was a talk about the potential closing of some of these and, and housing equipment here. Any more discussion on that?
Not at this time.
Not, not.
That's something we're working on for our long-term vision. Um, now that, as we're getting firm commitment from the townships. And we're gonna continue to do their services and we decide that we're gonna keep housing the equipment that we currently have.
Sure.
That's gonna be the next discussion is how we want to house that equipment, cause some of these shops are old. Um, we'll need to do something with them, whether it's replace them. Um, my attitude is a little less of having eight different shops, centralizing things a little more. Um, I, I think the spread outness, if you will, was. Years ago, it was harder to get to Litchfield during a snowstorm. You know, staying overnight in the shops was common. Um, having things spread out was a better concept to do snow and ice operations and blades too, less deadheading. You're closer to where you're working. Nowadays, it's easier to road travel, even in snow. So centralized, I think is more cost effective.
I was surprised that that's, that's a lot of shops. And the property that the shops sit on belongs to the township?
County. We own the property.
To, to county, okay.
And I can attest the Watkins shop is, I mean, you can't, you put a truck and a blade in there and that's, there ain't room to breathe.
There, there is safety issue in addition to their condition because of the size.
You're pushing seventy five years on some of these.
Think the future planning was always to get rid of some of them, centralize them more.
Yeah. Yep.
When, when we do a township maintenance agreement, refresh my memory, did they go for a year or?
Three years was typical past practice. I think I'd like to see a longer term agreement if we're gonna be making commitments of that nature. With facilities.
Well. That's kind of all right, but when we start talking about employing more people, then I. Some of this is being done because I've kinda made up my mind that we're not probably ever gonna get rid of these township maintenance agreements. I don't know, I'm not speaking for you, but it seems to really be an uphill struggle.
Yeah.
So in order to give them the maintenance that they request and to do justice to everyone, we've talked about increasing staffing. Feel like they're gonna have to be willing to pay for some of that. So when I said get four people, I should have spoke a little. Paul and I talked about it probably the other day too, so. That's why I'm asking, when was the last time we did the maintenance agreement?
The last agreement was signed in twenty seventeen, I wanna say, for the years eighteen, nineteen and twenty.
So we're doing it. So we do it. It's coming up now.
Yeah, we're right now working under an expired agreement. So that's why I wanted to get everything hammered out with the townships before we sign a new agreement. It can't, it keeps the pressure on that we need to get this figured out.
The new budget under your belt kinda to them before you do that.
Yep, a- and that's part of the discussion we can have when we talk about budgets.
Yep.
Is to see how we want the numbers to look. And at the end of your annual report, if you didn't look at the last page. We do call out basically the percentage, how much of township maintenance costs did townships pay for? That's that percentage of cost line, third from the right. Um, so in twenty twenty, townships paid for twenty nine percent of the township maintenance costs that we incur on their system. They have costs too, but that's the percentage of what we're spending on the roads that they're paying us. Thirty percent has kind of been the target for years, don't know why, but that's history.
So in two thousand twelve was like thirty seven percent, I wonder.
Hmm. If we have a light winter or something like that, that can flip those numbers, cause their fee is gonna be fixed. Our costs are gonna vary depending on the season.
Okay.
As I looked over this sheet, I, I marked, wow, there've been some real changes, like between ninety and ninety one. Holy smokes. Yeah, that, that was a lot of.
Ninety one was a big snorer.
Day. Yep, and those, those are the factors that play into some of this. And ninety, two thousand and one, that was kind of a, a big one. And then down in twelve, thirteen and fourteen. This was an interesting piece of, of information to look at.
I think, I, one of the comments that I've heard from the townships is they're willing to pay more. Cause basically their, their gas tax portion pays their, their maintenance. I mean, on the name of township, you get thirty thousand dollar check from the state through the county. And you write out a twenty seven thousand dollar check back to the county for maintenance agreement. It's like, this is a no brainer.
They, uh, they know.
We're willing to pay more. Yeah, they're willing to pay more as long as they're willing to work.
So it's easy to say willing, so I'm gonna be curious to see how willing they are when we start talking about hiring people. Doing some things. They tell me they're very well. I only have one township that started when they don't ever wanna change it. You heard them, they're willing to pay. But there's also um, some thinking on there that, that we're making money. Remember that conversation?
The subsidy conversation.
The subsidy, like they're subsidizing us and it's kinda hard to. It, the, I don't know.
It, it's all tax money. It's, there are different perspectives on how you look at what the township's paying versus what the county's paying.
But, but we know that if we might go on these townships, we wouldn't need as much crew, but like crew, we would need as much equipment. And that's just a fact. And that's why many counties have gotten out of the business of doing townships. That's the fact too. I mean, there's not very many people that do it. But we've talked about this since I became a commissioner and I made up my mind that they're probably here to stay, but then we need to fix them.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's all.
I think they're will, the, what I'm hearing too, they're willing to, as long as we're willing to make the investment, they are too. And because they, they have invested interest. I mean, us leaving it means they get to take or manage it and they don't want that either. I mean, and that's not a cheap, it's saying it's, it's not a cheap fix.
Well, I don't always buy all the reasoning. I mean, I don't believe there, can't find anybody to do it. Maybe they can't. But I think if, if there was, if they knew all the townships were available, somebody, some entrepreneur might come along and say, you know, why don't I do this? Because it's a way to, you know, create a reason. But on the other hand, if there's yours with your lap, I get the situation. You know, I have.
Sorry.
I have more cities than townships, so I get things differently.
Yeah, exactly.
Is it up to us to subsidize them? We all use a road, I get it, so, right?
But they did absorb our county roads, so I think that's the, that's the purpose of the subsidy, what the percentage split is, dollar amount, that's the debate.
And if we start hiring people, then it's a whole argument, I think.
How many of our townships are independent? They do their own?
Two. Two. We handle fifteen and two do their own.
And have you had anybody call on to come back to the county? You have?
Maybe.
Maybe?
Um, there's been some discussions. As of now, we, there's two.
But then I think when they start losing the people that are doing it.
There's been some contractor turnover with one of the townships and I think they're struggling with that a little bit. But there's been some conversations about, I, I think it's, it's easy to have the county take care of things for you. That's why the townships like it. Um, would they be willing to pay more? Yes, that's what I'm hearing. Do they want to pay more? Uh, not many will admit to that. But I think when it comes down to it.
Well, like Dallas over the first year, they, I mean, they were so fortunate, they, we heard land the snow. So, you know, had, had it started off like a bit, whatever, ninety, ninety one, they would have had a whole different thing. It's a never ending conversation.
You, you said something then. You said, we have some of these buildings that are safety hazards.
Yeah. And those are mostly the ones that I would consider moving on from, probably centralizing equipment. They're, they're the same ones that are in need of work. They're sixty and seventy years old. They're too small. So when we park our equipment with snow and ice attachments, um, we might have twelve inches left as we touch the front of the building. Before, where we close the door in the back. And it's a safety problem because if there were a fire or an incident with the man in the building and the doors closed. I don't know how you get out, try and crawl under the equipment, uh, it, it's a problem. So that's part of what we're considering too with these old shops. Uh, you know, if we were to rebuild in those locations, we would have to upsize at the very least.
You're not, you're not building on that location in Watkins.
The lots are small.
That's a good.
It's, it's.
I mean, when, when we, well, when we thought Cosmos, we were gonna shut down Cedar Mills, I believe.
We did.
What, that was the goal and then they wanted to use it for a while and now I don't know what's.
We're using it as storage. I came to sell Cedar Mills, I think, two years ago and we decided to hang on to it for now.
For storage. But so when we took on Cosmos and that big building, it turned out to be more expensive than we thought, but it turned out to be. They convinced me a good thing. They always convince me of things later, right? So then that would close down one, cause that was Cosmos, that was Cedar Mills shut down.
Correct.
That would be, you're saying there's not a big unlock, good.
Not in Watkins, where it's located.
Would we ever build there?
I don't, not that.
Not that.
No, where, where we have space to work with and kinda where I'm looking at is Kingston, Litchfield and um.
Crow River.
Crow River. Those are the three where we have some space to work with. And there are newer facilities.
Does the state ever talk anymore about doing more?
They're interested. Yep. Once we are committed to what we're gonna do, they want to be involved. They have storage, needs, heated storage.
Those were my only questions. Nice, nice report, Phil. Well done.
I do appreciate.
Yep.
Okay. And I mean, for the.
I don't put it on my nightstand really.
For the annual report, I mean, the credit has to go to my accountant. She's the one who pulls it all together and puts the report together. I just read it. Alright.
Anything else in your presentation for us, Phil?
I don't think so.
Okay, any additional questions for Phil? Very, very nice report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
Yeah.
Nope, this is me. Not breaking down on you.
Wrong button.
Okay.
Thanks. They're coming in.
Oh, that's like.
It is, it's a different chair.
Good morning.
Hello.
Good morning.
Why did you say, oh oh?
Well, I'm feeling a little, little taken aback cause Phil had pictures and everything and I don't have pictures.
We need pictures, are we? Words aren't good for me, I'm like, ah.
Fitness, I'm feeling a little like.
What were you doing on a field trip?
Get the easel out. For, for our next presentation, where we were watching Phil, we're like, well, how do we really give the board a flavor of what adult protection is? And it's like, well, and how do we maintain confidentiality? And then, do we really wanna show those types of pictures? Cause they can be pretty difficult.
Little graphics maybe.
Yeah, yeah, so and before lunch, probably not again. So.
This isn't about husbands, is it?
Well, good morning. Thank you for allowing us to come in today. Um, June is Adult Protection Month. And so we wanted to give you just kind of a brief snapshot of what we're seeing here for two thousand twenty. I have Amy Inglis, who is our supervisor for that um, program area here, to just kinda give you kind of a brief update of this. So with that, Amy?
Hello. So I'll just do a brief little overview. Um, don't have too terrible information, so I'll go over it quickly. Um, some of you obviously know who I am and I've gone over some of the information with you. But for some of you that do not know what a vulnerable adult is, um, a vulnerable adult is someone that is age eighteen or older. And there are two different kinds of vol- of a vulnerable adult, a functional and a categorical. A functional VA is someone who resides within their own home, but cannot provide for their own care and cannot protect themselves from maltreatment. And a categorical vulnerable adult is a resident of a facility who receives services from a licensed um, company organization. So when we receive a vulnerable adult report, we do have to determine if they meet that criteria. So we do get reports from the state, from the market system. Someone can call in that report or they can go online and make that report as well. Um, in two thousand nineteen, so if you wanna go to the next slide.
Do I have it?
You, you have the power.
I was trying to move, I can't see a cursor here.
You just use the button, the mouse button to click.
Okay.
Paul is not good with technology.
Another vulnerability. That in here too?
Right here.
So in two thousand nineteen, Meeker County did have one hundred and ninety nine malt treatment reports. I'm gonna see if I can see there. That were screened in it, two thousand twenty, Meeker County had a hundred and thirty three reports that were screened. Um, in it, twenty twenty, of those hundred and thirty three reports, eighteen total were screened in for investigation. The majority of the reas- these reports were financial exploitation by someone who does not have the authority to access the person's money. The other reports that were screened in had allegations of self neglect, caregiver neglect, physical abuse, sexual abuse and financial exploitation. By someone who holds the authority to the vulnerable adult's money. Of those eighteen reports, Meeker County determined four of those allegations to be substantiated, thirteen to be false. And one, we were not able to complete that investigation. There is a notable difference, as you could tell, between those um, numbers between two thousand nineteen of a hundred and ninety nine reports. And then twenty twenty of a hundred and thirty three reports. Um, and there was a statewide difference as well. And that is strictly the state had said due to COVID. Families were not able to go into facilities, as we all know, facilities, nursing homes, group homes, all of that were, were blocked. People could not go in. We do get a lot of our reports from families, um, from community members. So without people being able to go into those facilities, the state cannot get reports. So far in twenty twenty one, we have seen eighty seven total reports, which we are obviously seeing a drastic increase. Five reports so far screened in, we currently have two open that we are investigating. The allegations vary between emotional abuse, sexual abuse, financial exploitation, non-fiduciary, caregiver neglect and self neglect. Our adult protection team does continue to partner with our community paramedic and public health, provide the best continuity of care. And to ensure that we do not have repeat maltreatment occur. Prior to COVID, the adult protection team was working on our multidisciplinary team with our community of banks, local providers, police departments. County attorney's office, but that had to be put on hold and will then be able to move forward. We do wanna obviously have all of our entities in our community for that um, group. Just so that we can go over those reports that we get, um, so that everyone does know, you know, what is a report, why do we screen them and why do we screen them out? And move forward with that.
The intent of the adult protection team statutorily is to review all of our screened out reports. And to determine if we made the right decision. So there's community engagement in the process of what we're screening when we do listen to them. That process of having the community members screen out a report, they start to get a better understanding of what their role is in adult protection. Um, there's often times that banks will make reports to us, um, about financial transactions that they think might be challenging. Um, I can look back a, a year or so ago where someone was, uh, with a parent trying to cash a twenty five thousand dollar check. Bank had issue with that and called us and we found out that there was a fiduciary um, exploitation occurring. Um, with that individual, those funds are there for to, to take care of that person. So that's just an example of kind of why we wanna have this broader partnership and this community coalition. No matter if in the child protection, it all takes off, all of us to kinda keep an eye on the most. Um, we've had great relationships with law enforcement, the county attorney's office and our community paramedic in assisting us. A lot of our services and supports are, are set up to divert adult protection issues. Um, however, that doesn't stop all of it. And so, as you can see by the reports, we get a fair amount of, of, of. Things that are occurring that people are questioning and want us to take a deeper look at, so.
Any questions?
I, I just, this COVID year has had me thinking a lot about this kinda thing. So back last winter, I read an article in, I believe it was the Star Tribune about privately owned nursing homes and what was going on inside. Privately nursing homes and I don't know if we know the destruction yet. People being moved in there knowingly having COVID. This was in Minnesota, New York. And so, you probably attend state meetings, are, are they gonna get something in place so this changes? Because if that would have been one of my parents in those nursing homes, they would have been out of there come if I had to break in. And we don't know what went on. And we don't know what went on per year out of these people's lives, so.
We don't.
Will that ever be handled differently? Because I certainly don't think it's handled.
So we don't actually usually get jurisdiction over the nursing homes. The Department of Health does. We will get the emergency response over a nursing home, so if it does require a twenty-four hour response, so someone is in, immediate.
So, so if I, and I, I'm not talking about our local.
Right.
Really, I'm not.
And they are, I do know that, yep, in our regional and state adult protection meetings, they have talked a lot about that. There have been coalitions formed since COVID because of that, because there has been a lot, and that the destruction has been seen. And we, kind of all along during COVID, has been, what is going on in these facilities? No one knows what's going on in these facilities. We gotta get in these facilities. And so they have started forming groups of, you know, what do we need to do? How do we, how do we fix this? We can't have this happen again if, you know, we have this, they outbreak these pandemics again and these, the doors get locked. We can't have a repeat.
The postmortem of this emergency event that is on the, the, the docket for, I know our trade group to take a look at. Um one area that's also um we've seen statewide is an increase as soon as the COVID uh kinda started lifting and, and folks were able to get back in to these facilities. Um public health has a, a, a component of their um, their website or whatever. Their, their organization called the Office of Health Facility Complaints, and those complaints have gone way up um just in the last couple of months, because people are starting to see, oh, wait a minute, things weren't all right here. And, you know, we, we try to assume positive intent, however, we do know that um that's not always the case in reality.
I mean, what went on was strictly right now, you know, nursing homes are gonna make some more money. Fortunately killed a lot of people in my opinion. So if, if I have a loved one in a nursing home, and I, and I suspect that they're being abused or something, whatever. So I can't, so what's the first contact?
Call us, or call Mark.
Yeah, I guess.
Call Mark, great. We have a one-eight-hundred number, and then what that will do is we'll, we'll automatically kick it to us. Um that initial report, once Mark receives it, um has a determination of emergency need. And we have a twenty-four hour response with our on-call social worker, as well as law enforcement, to ensure that that person's safety needs are being met. If it's not meeting that requirement, then we attend to it within twenty-four hours of receiving that report.
So if I sent you a picture of a parent that was bruised and no reasonable explanation, then you would contact attorneys or law enforcement?
We would assess that.
That's the screening process.
Correct, yep, and then we may engage law enforcement. Um and county attorneys is usually secondary after law enforcement.
So if a bank calls you up, I'm not trying to prolong this, but I just wanna understand that. And somebody has been in the bank with their parent or something trying to get money, you can't just go look in there and come through, right?
Statutorily, we can.
You can, without any court order or anything.
Correct.
Okay.
Once it comes to us as a report of a vulnerable adult, we have statutory protections to be able to look at information. The bank itself is, is protected statutorily to provide that report to us.
So you don't have to get a court order, grabbing, you don't have to, or you can just go.
Not at that initial um phase of trying to determine.
Then if you determine there may be an issue, then.
Then we follow through our processes of, of ensuring what this individual's capacity is to make a decision on their own behalf. Are there guardianship or power of attorney um in play?
Sure.
That would provide that authority to that individual?
So, so banks are pretty dialed in, so if they saw a series of smaller checks coming that may trigger that, or is it solely the accompaniment of a parent?
It could be many, many withdrawals we had, it could be scams, if someone is.
Scam.
Yep, we get a lot of scams. It could be wire transfers, it could be large transfers, it could be many checks going to one person.
Yeah, or, or if they're even seeing checks go to um places that they know that this individual is not using those funds. So there's a lot of different trigger points that banks can, do look at. And that's part of their ongoing fraud protection that we all are, are protected by. You know, you get the phone call from your bank, it's like, did you authorize this transfer when you're on vacation? And like, yeah, don't freeze my car, no, I need it. Uh or no, wait a minute, I've never been in that town. So they, they're getting pretty good at it, and that's very helpful.
So I'm assuming you're gonna be busier this year than you were last?
Yes, we are already seeing that trajectory in almost all of our program areas.
I'm sure.
And all these reports are not nursing home reports, period.
County-wide.
County, that's what we're talking about right now. But if a nursing home has a neglect, they go contact you first, and then you have to go to the state? Or do you investigate it?
State first, and then the, the state would do the investigation because of their licensure. They may engage us if there's emergency protective services or protective services that are required. And then we would assign a social worker to work with that person.
I gotcha. And they come back to you guys and, and say, hey, there could be a possible. So you do actually deal with it, it's just not in this particular report.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and, and getting back to what Beth said, kind of missing, confusing here, they could still call you because they didn't know where else to go, and you'd redirect them to.
Yes.
Yep.
So when I asked you if I had a bruised parent and I was.
Yes, we would direct you on who to call or how to get that reported.
Yep. We don't want any wrong doors to access the support services. Thank you. Thank you. Uh the next order of business I have before you is, is um you can tell it somewhere else, because all of the lawn chairs and the barricades and the blankets are all set up for our um parade.
Parade of bands tonight.
Come, uh yeah, so that seems to be exciting. We could use some rain, so.
We don't wanna turn on saying you wanna drain tonight, but.
Not tonight, no, no, but I, I have to apologize to our farmers. I bought a brand new lawn mower this year. And I have been able to mow as much as I really wanted to with my new mower.
We're not, we're not feeling sorry for you right now, Paul.
I imagine you're not. Um the next order of business I have before you is to approve our social services accounts payable.
And I have to say, you've been kinda boring in that department too.
Yeah, we, we kinda have, but, yeah.
More pictures to get.
Which I think is okay for now.
Yeah, no, that's good. That's good. I, I don't have anything. Numbers look good. I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable for Paul.
We have a motion?
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
We have a second? Is there any further discussion? For Paul about the accounts payables? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none?
This isn't right. I don't have anything.
Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.
One last question for Paul.
Okay.
And, and I have, it's gonna eliminate one of my reports at the end, like the pact.
Cass.
And you were saying that, that that was training that you wanted to give, and you got it through PAC so that a collaborative could give it to everybody?
Yes, so we had uh received some information from Alea, um kind of describing their own system. And what this is, is, is a, is a program um tailored towards child protection. Um and it's really a leadership program for leaders to start understanding how best to um support our child protection workers and sh- support the system by making sure that the system is focusing on parents and, and helping parents navigate the difficult situations that they find themselves in that cause their children to um be unsafe or need protection. We had looked at this and we were intending to try to figure a way for us to purchase that for Meeker County as um our own. Um however, Tina Shank, our child protection supervisor, recognized that PAC four um would be a good partner in this. And so we reached out to PAC four, and they were also looking for this type of leadership training. It works better for the region to have the leadership training, because we share so many services in common. And we wanted everybody to move down the same path. Uh Rochelle from PAC four um wrote a grant for U Care and was able to receive all of the funds to cover the cost of this program. And so now it's being made available throughout the region. We have a strong partnership with Yellow Medicine County um in how we're moving forward with supporting families. Kind of the same dynamics and using this as, as just another opportunity for us to help our organizations, but also to help those organizations that we partner with in child protection throughout the region.
And correct me if I'm wrong, one of the things that came out of that is super interesting. I talked about it last month too, but it's very interesting. Using this program, there is a definite reduction in out-of-home placement.
Correct. Yep, and that's, that's where we're heading. So we purchased uh um services from Safe Generations for our signs of safety modality and how we screen and, and, and handle reports. This is the next level of that, and how do we create a collaborative safety environment where we're working with parents? Not that we're saying uh you can't keep your kids safe, but really attending to those things that, that they have going on in their lives that um are creating an unsafe situation for their children. Um and in doing so, we're not defaulting to pulling the children out of the home, which is local tax levy dollar. And it always has more trauma impact on the children, making it more difficult for them to reengage. Because parents aren't learning the skills. You're focusing on the kid and keeping the kids safe. We're, now we're changing our focus to focus on the parents. You need to keep your child safe. And really, when you look at family structure, we have child protection built into our community. And the best child protection we have is that family structure. And so how do we make that family structure um strong and, and, and um focusing on what they need to do to take care of their children?
Now, last element, one more question. They also said in there that under the ARP, if there was child welfare reform that was needed, some of those dollars could be funded towards that.
Yes. Yep.
So, just for you guys on that particular committee, if, you know, this may be something that the ARP money may be a good destination for.
Yes, and we're just not to the point of being able to understand exactly how those dollars would be worked, but it is something that, that is on our radar. And as we continue to progress and grow, we're getting more data. It helps us understand and support what areas we're going to need funding for, and then of course, we'll try to attach dollars to that, so.
What does ARP?
That was the exact report I was gonna give.
What does ARP stand for?
American Rescue Fund.
Okay, that's, those, those dollars are.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and also we look at, not to use more of your time, because we'll talk more about this at, at, at the work session. This is all part of the, uh, a presentation that we will do. Um but Family First Preservation Act is, is something that's coming to our forefront. And really what that is, is, is let's really focus our efforts on families. Let's make them strong and living at home. But it doesn't mean that we're going to accept unsafe behavior or those sorts of things. But it is really focusing on that family unit taking care of their own children, not using foster care or something. Cause we don't have the resources.
No.
Right, there's just not enough providers out there.
There was a mention here of the vulnerable adult and, and, and my family and I, we, we listen to the radio station. And every time there's the police report and the sheriff's report, they talk about child neglect abuse, child neglect and abuse. Are, every time a sheriff person or a police person is called out for a child neglect abuse situation, does that automatically get sent to you, Paul?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, every, every law enforcement engagement with a child. Um we are very pleased with our law enforcement partners that they're keeping us informed. The, it might not be a screen-in report right at that time, but what it helps us do is, is, is understand where there may be some weaknesses in that family unit that we can provide support to through uh Parent Support Outreach Program, um Family Home Visitor Program, Public Health has. Um we have Project Harmony that Public Health is also doing. All these different things that we have locally that we're just trying to emphasize um to, again, focus on that family and, and help them and support them.
Excellent.
Forgive me my committee report.
Yes.
It is far more eloquently than I.
Uh well, I'm, 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 I'm passionate about it. I think that this is the way to go. I've seen a, a number of situations where children have been in out-of-home placement in my lifetime. It solves the emergent safety need, but it never really has a good long-term impact. So that's what we're hopeful for, and I know this is something that the board has always been kind of concerned about, um out-of-home placements. It's a very large piece of our budget, and it's a very large expenditure for the county. So we really wanna continue to focus on how do we not do that?
I was just gonna add too, on like the rescue squad too is, I mean, if we see something, if we have a obligation, a duty.
Because of.
Responsibility.
Yeah.
I mean, that we need to report to social services, do anything that we would notice on a.
As a teacher, we had some of those responsibilities, at, at every level, didn't matter if it was a kindergarten or a person at the collegiate level.
And the, the other point I was gonna make was the financial impact once out-of-home placement equals expense. Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, and, and we'll talk more about this, but those dollars in sense, when you look at it, are not just the out-of-home placement dollars, but they're the, the dollars that are being expended by multiple calls of law enforcement, county attorney time. Um schools are picking up the cost of this. It's just one of those things that has a very high social cost. And the more we can do, because not just at that point in time, for the rest of that person's life, it has impacts, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity and the lead-in on that as well. We didn't talk beforehand, so.
I kinda threw that one to you, but.
Yeah, alright, no, no worries.
Thank you for that nice report, Paul.
You're welcome. Have a good day then.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, that was Paul. We took care of that. Next, we have Barb.
Good morning, Commissioner. We're welcome. Hi, Barbara. So I'm gonna help contribute to the social services issues, so number one. Doing my job. Like to request the renewal for Milner Vineyard, and I'm sure that that's not what happens on these. It's kind of a back-to-back as you look at it. Um okay, before a license can be issued, you know, you are the um recommending firm and so familiar Vineyard, which is a very, very wonderful um place to go. She's back in water. I'm back in water.
They never send samples.
No, no, you just have to go there and sample, but they're, they're, it's a very nice um establishment. And so um I'd like you to consider their renewal. Oh, fun, put aside or puns put aside.
Yeah.
Move to approve the renewal on their Sunday lis- Sunday license.
And, and on sale. On sale.
And on sale. Do I hear a second?
I'll sign that motion, Madam Chair.
Have a motion that has been seconded for Milner Vineyard over here. What, uh, any other additional questions, nigh remarks for Barb at all?
I might save them for the American Legion.
Well.
On that note, moving forward, uh we, we will take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Of course, yes.
Just remember, I didn't put the agenda order to you. So, okay, then I have um two temporary uh applications for events that are wonderful to see this summer. One is in August five through eight for the fair, which is a, a goal. And the second one is um September three through five, so I'm asking for those temporary uh requests for the American Legion post one oh four.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the American Legion application for temporary on-sale liquor license for the events, August fifth through eighth, September third through fifth at the Meeker County Fairgrounds.
May I have a second?
I'll also get that motion, Madam Chair. I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
The motion has been seconded. Any questions? Any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
One abstained. All right, motion carries.
The next item is you should have received 12 different batches of payables that you're considering, eight social, right, social services, and then credit card and et cetera.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
For county and hospital accounts payable, is there any discussion? Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, we will take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Accounts payable. At this time, I will recess County Board, and we will reconvene as County Ditch Authority. And we have Barb with a couple items.
So Barb and John will be proposing these items for the Middle Fork situation with our County Ditch forty-seven. So the first item before you, it's necessary to recognize that Reiki Noonan represents both clients, both the Middle Fork Watershed and also us as a county on issues regarding drainage. So to provide this legal assistance, we, in regard to multi-purpose drainage repair grant that we're looking at that specific situation, we are asking and acknowledging that there is an understanding of a potential conflict of interest. In addressing this matter, Kale has provided for us both partnership agreement for the repair project and also in attempting to secure funding, working for both Middle Fork and for the county's interest. They addressing this conflict waiver, and unless we were to not approve this, there should be no financial impact of the county different unless we were to have to pursue legal other where, or other places. And I'm hoping that you took some time to read through his lengthy explanation of the details and how this may or could affect us if there became something problematic where we would need to have a outside counsel, you know, Randy helping to step in or another situation. With this specific grant, both John and I have listened to Kale, talked to him personally, and we believe that this would be a good situation for us to work together as a team and to approve this conflict of interest agreement.
Your opinion?
Even though I don't represent the county on the ditch, ditches, I did review the letter that Kale wrote, and based upon his letter and the integrity that he seems to offer to the county, I believe that his explanation is justifiable and it seems sufficient.
I'd make a motion to approve the Reiki Noonan conflict waiver agreement.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
We have a motion that has been seconded on the conflict waiver agreement. Is there any further discussion, any questions for Barb or John?
Is this a common occurrence, Sin?
This is the first time I've ever done one of these for this situation.
Okay.
And keep in mind that this is very distinctly toward this project and this grant situation. It's not covering anything outside of that specific.
Right.
Good, good point. Very good point. So once this project is complete, then this will be null and void.
Correct.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I might add that the Middle Fork Watershed, you had to meet on Wednesday and also approve this idyllic conflict. I don't have a signed copy because they met remotely, but we'll have it in our file shortly, so they took the same action that you did on this particular situation. Then moving on to the second part, back some time, Middle Fork presented this project outline to the county board and gave you like the scope of what they were looking at doing. So they've identified multiple areas of erosion occurring on County Ditch forty-seven. For several years, they've been working on this, preliminary work, and now they're pursuing additional funding to assist in making these repairs so they could minimize future erosion. And I think, I believe you saw some video and some things on the Middle Fork when they presented some time back. They're applying specifically for the Clean Water Fund Grant to do these repairs, and in the grant process, documentation showing partnerships with other agencies to address measurable outcomes does help accrue points, and therefore, the reason for us to partner with them as a county, and the watershed is being pursued. The resolution describes this partnership agreement, and that we also are giving them permission to allow for the drainage authority's utilization of the right-of-way. So it's specifically, they would have to go out and find and work with each landowner to get different right-of-ways entry and easement access, and part of the agreement, if you read the details on that, is that our partnership is to allow for them to use our right-of-way granted to the county based on the ditch law. And that's one of the items that we're gonna be working. So being the drainage authority, we'll retain your jurisdiction to cover the system and all responsibilities. We are merely sharing, you might say, the privileges that we have through drainage law for right-of-entry with the watershed. So this project funded through the grant will reduce the need for the county to pursue some fairly heavy erosion repairs and could likely, or would likely, save these landowners considerable amount of money if this grant funding is received. So that's part of what we're proposing here pushing. So our request today is that you adopt this resolution outlining this partnership and also giving some points toward obtaining this funding, and hopefully that will help the Middle Fork.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving partnership agreement between the Middle Fork Crow River Watershed District for repairs along County Ditch forty-seven.
We have motion for a resolution. Do we hear a second?
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Any questions for Barb or John? Now, this is specific to ditch number forty-seven?
That is correct. Yes.
So every time, even though this is a resolution, it would be, it would be completed upon completion of the work? And then if we ever want to do this again, we have to readdress.
Yes, they have, I think, eight identified projects they're looking to do, and they're applying for a few of the projects. They don't anticipate to get grant funding for all of them, so may be stretched out over the course of a few years, but, but I think in total, all the projects combined, estimated was over $500,000 worth of work. So if they could get grant funding for that versus using ditch dollars, that would be a huge benefit too.
And have those dollars been acquired now for this?
No, they're, why they're going to.
That's what they're going through.
In the process.
Yep, they gotta apply for the grant.
Okay. Okay.
That's why this resolution will allow them to.
To get rolling.
To get personal.
Any additional questions about the resolution? Hearing none. Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldberg? Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretteson?
Yes. And the motion carries by roll call.
Thank you.
All right.
John, go back out, he's watching what's happening on County Ditch thirty-five today.
All right. Is it all good?
Yeah, it's all good.
All good. Great. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Did, yeah, we did the hospital and we did, we did all of those. Okay, so now I will adjourn as County Ditch Authority, and we will reconvene as our county board regular meeting. And next on the agenda, we have Andrew.
Yes, so as the county board is aware, the county purchased the property at seven oh one, seven eleven Sibley Avenue here in Litchfield with the intention of purchasing, or building a new government services center. Property was purchased back in twenty seventeen for, and to date, the county has invested approximately $231,000 into the property between purchase, taxes for twenty seventeen and eighteen, and then demolition of the existing structure there. At our twentieth work session, the county board directed the county attorney and I to start putting together what it would take for us to sell this property. So we have done that research, and we are now here today to seek formal direction on two items. The first is combining the two existing parcels into one parcel, which we believe would make it a more marketable piece of property and would serve the county's interest in the long term, where we wouldn't have someone bid on one parcel, but not the other. And then additionally, formally vote to direct us to pursue the sale of the property. If that is ultimately the direction of the board, we would, per state statute, advertise the notice of the sale for a three-week period starting next Thursday, and then have bids delivered to us the Tuesday after that, which I believe is the thirteenth of July. If we receive bids, we would present them to you at the second meeting in July.
So it's open for three weeks?
Correct. It's advertised in the paper for three weeks.
Three weeks, yeah.
What is the, is it the local newspaper, or are we using?
Yeah, we would, publish in the local newspaper. We've also had a few individuals express interest in the property, and so we would contact them directly as well. Based on the investment that the county has already placed in the property, we would recommend a base sale price of $240,000.
So do you need two motions, or is it all wrapped up in one motion?
We can do, we can do this one motion.
This is one.
Yep.
To combine and to move forward with advertising for sale. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move that to combine the two parcels to one property and instruct Andrew and whoever to go forward with advertising for sale. I don't know how you're aligning at two forty, but I don't know if we need that in motion or not.
Well, it's based on the fact that we've already put in a certain, you know, $231,000.
Two fifty, but.
We can do whatever amount the board would like.
The property is worth two fifty.
Since twenty seventeen when it was purchased?
They can bid more.
Just curious, how does, is this the right, how does the bid process actually work in terms of this particular thing? So we want minimum of two forty is what you request, you said, right? How does that process work then? If the, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, so what will happen is the notice will be published in the paper. Potential bidders will reach out to me and request a form to bid on. On that form, which is included in the packet, what we ask for is their, their price, we ask for contact information, as well as their intended use of the property and the timeline that they intend to develop that use. So if someone wants to come in and put in a retail facility, they would identify that. If they wanna do it as some other facility, they would identify that on there as well. And then we can use that to determine if we get multiple bids, is there a certain bid we want to pursue because the county board is interested in a certain use?
So I'm gonna make my motion to combine two county, the two parcels into one at a minimum cost, price of $240,000.
I have one question, Andrew. You said they have to tell us what their intended use is. And their timeframe. Are we able to direct them that they're gonna keep it? You know, aesthetically looking okay until that time that they're gonna use it? Or is that not appropriate?
That'd be like a city ordinance requirement.
Well, that's right, once we sell it, we lose jurisdiction.
Correct.
It's within the city limits, right? So that falls on their shoulders.
I don't know, somebody comes up with the money to buy it, they're gonna be able to inform them to put every project.
We'd hope so.
It's very specific, it's very specific in state statute that if the county is not placed with any of the offers, they can deny all of them. So there is no requirement to give it to best bid. So you can go out, solicit, get seventeen offers and say, you know what, we decided not to sell it, or we don't like any of those. You know, if someone's coming in and doing a use that the county's not comfortable with, you don't have to sell it.
And, and if we, you know, if we go through that process and we determine that there's not a bidder that we're interested in, or if we go through that process and we don't receive any bidders, once we go through the process, at that point, we can engage the service of a real estate broker to assist us with it. And then there's certain requirements there as well.
Well, and then we will also pay seven percent or six and a half. So now.
Correct, correct.
Well, I'll go ahead and put the horse back, head of the curtain, second best motion.
No.
I appreciate that.
With the addition of the two, two forty. Okay, we have a motion that has been seconded. Do we have any additional questions?
To be clear, was that motion for two forty-one or two fifty?
Two forty, minimum.
Two forty.
Additional questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
For my report, I only have two items today. The first is that yesterday, Commissioners Johnson, Schmidt, and I attended the AMC District Five Regional Meeting, and at that, we were presented with an award from MCIT for our outstanding performance in the Property Casualty Division, so the most prestigious of insurance awards.
Wow, way to go.
We'll find a nice spot on the wall.
Yeah, I'm worried how much that costs.
Everybody, everybody now.
Oh, shit.
We were the only ones to receive one yesterday, and. The other item is that, as a reminder, our offices will be closed on July fifth in observance of Independence Day. That is all I have.
Any district one should go because she needs to go.
Yep, if you need.
I don't have much, I have prime west. We had a, how I put my notes away, let me dig.
Uh-oh.
We had a prime west meeting. Our total equity is up about four and a half million dollars, and of course, enrollments continue because of COVID, so that's why some of these might go away, probably not though. Legislatively, they're worried about the state trying to carve out dental and transportation from the state donor rather than us, which would be detrimental. An interesting thing, I think, was that Jim wanted to pay people who hadn't been vaccinated to have the vaccination, and the people in the office who had would get paid also, and I don't remember the amount.
Thirty thousand?
Well, no, the person, the total thing, when it cost about thirty thousand. The interesting part was he did not get his way, which is kind of rare. In fact, he said that's the first time in how many years where he has brought something up and it didn't go through the board, and he said he was excited about it, so you're excited to get turned on for something, Jim was excited about it, but the consensus was that we weren't gonna do that. Because for one reason, if somebody isn't doing the vaccination, they have their personal reasons for doing it, and a hundred or two hundred dollars probably isn't gonna change their mind. And then quickly, we had a hospital exec board just met with Hilly from, and Brian from Center Care. We went over the positive things that are working with our partnership with Center Care, and there's a list of them. Talked about some of the things that we feel need improvement on, so they're looking at the. Um, so they're looking at the, uh, management agreement in hopes of extending it, um, adding some things to it that are gonna solve some of the issues after the, after they left. Uh, Kurt talked about the increases in wages and how we're gonna distribute them. They'll be going through the, um, board at the next board meeting and the recommendation I think will come out for that to get our nursing staff and all the staff up to where they should be at the end of the study. Hopefully that will cure some of the issues that are.
Who makes those, who decides how much housekeeping gets paid and how much the R and.
The same way they do here, they did a compensation, compensation study. And I don't know, I don't know, Andrew, if you know where he gets his information, but they get their information, they use surrounding counties. Just as we did here, we, we, when we had our study, we did, um, size, counties, our size in our area, and that's how it goes. So, so if we know that we're losing staff, for instance, to McCloud County or whatever, it's all well and well, so that's how it's done. And what they found was we're fine getting in hits when you move up because we have so many steps. I think he explained that at our education. So we'll be moving forward with that. And that was about the extent of the meeting, and that's the only two meetings I have. Quiet, which doesn't hurt my feelings.
No.
So, that's what I have.
Anybody wanna?
I, I just have one, so I'll have to get through that.
Okay.
I had, uh, one watershed, one plan for North, uh, Fort Crow River, which I'm real late to the party. They basically have the plan set already. A lot of that was through, you know, with Hausman.
But you know they were meeting even there?
No, this is, well, this is their first meeting, apparently. The other one was Clearwater.
Oh.
Which is a new plan.
Okay.
For that district, so it's kinda confusing. So they basically have their plan in place and that was through, uh, with Hausman as our representative there and just basically, literally, or not to put a pun, just getting my feet wet in the watershed. One plan, one thing in terms of this, there's a lot of information and they're not utilizing everything they've gotten as far as grants. I think it's about ten percent that they're utilizing that they've actually received to do it. Like, I think it's about, um, one point one million they've had grant monies and they've used about a hundred and ten thousand. And, um, that's about it for that. It was, like I said, it's too much information, I'm just learning on that. Not a lot of information I can give you constructive on that. That's all I had.
Okay, volunteers to go on that?
Um. You started, or you started already, so you might as well finish your.
Yeah.
Beth kinda summed up, uh, Prime West. We had the J D seventeen, we were all there for that. It didn't involve yours, but, um, so that's pretty much it. Pearl Works, um, our director Dale Miller is in the hospital, has been there up in St. Paul now for, I think he's home now, but he had been there for three, four days. So, uh, hopefully he's gonna get better because he is a key element out there. He and his wife is one of the assistants, you know, right there in the office, but we hope for him on a, on a speedy recovery. We did have a fundraiser, um, last Thursday night at Wusickin Park. But, uh, as you recall, the heat damage was extremely high today.
I only had a dozen cars of precaution. That's the small, it was just, we almost canceled.
Yeah, I thought they might this one too, but Terry Shaw came, was seventy-six years old, and stood up there and played with heartbreak. I really expected to hear all your Shaw Allen Shaw type stuff. He's kinda changed, yep. He doesn't play the same thing.
He's my age, he played what was hot.
That's true. Um, AMC yesterday, um, Steve and I and, uh, Andrew were there. I found that to be really interesting. The insurance presentation was what really caught me when they talked about Sheriff's Department and the costs. Then they went on to unknowingly kinda described Meeker County in a way when they talked about, um, the coverage for PS, uh, post-traumatic syndrome. And how some of the things have changed in that and, um, how liable we can be. Uh, they also talked about, um, a risk mitigation for jails where they come in and they take a look around. And what they use for an example is if a prisoner wants to commit suicide, sometimes they'll climb up on a handrail and then take a, a nosedive off the handrail. And they usually aren't successful in killing themselves, so instead they do themselves a traumatic brain injury. And, uh, so it goes on. But they do do that, that maybe something down the road, or we do some remodeling in there. They come in and see things that we might not before, uh, that we can fix. Um, then they talked about, we need to have someone registered, just one person, uh, from Meeker for the NACO so that we can vote for the second vice president. Did you catch that, Steve?
Yeah, I caught that.
But I got a hunch that that registration probably costs a fair amount.
I, I don't know. No, exactly, although I think we probably are registered.
Are we?
I mean, I think we have a vote. We just need to vote. Mary Jo McGuire is.
I thought it was you. I don't know why I thought that. I could be wrong.
I.
Yeah, it's, it's the annual conference. Uh, I'll figure out what it costs.
Eh, all they want, we can proxy our vote off.
Yeah, I just, I don't know why, Steve, I thought, maybe I'm dreaming.
It's, it's, it's only nine hundred and ninety dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, seven hundred dollars.
I had a hunch.
For a vote?
Holy crap. So it's to attend the conference, if you attend the conference, you get a vote.
Okay. Um, is that in DC differently?
It's in Maryland.
Maryland.
I think that's the one that goes to different places, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's the one that jumps around.
So there you go, Steve, you wanna go to Maryland?
Virtually.
One, is it?
Yeah.
It's in July.
July.
It wasn't Vegas one year, but probably.
Actually, there's a two day option, it's only four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Virtual, still get a vote.
Have to bring crabs back for all the commissioners.
Virtual?
Yeah, not, not virtual crab. No, I'm talking the ones that eat, you know, in the bay. Be clarified that.
They can get you those sticks and groceries.
No, no, no. That's the good stuff.
They're gonna show this, um, you're gonna be able to catch this online.
The, the NACO? Yeah.
The AMC print though.
Oh, yes, 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 yeah, there's gonna be a, a virtual version of the meeting that doesn't have the, the local reports that.
Twenty-first or something?
Yeah, it's gonna be on Monday.
There'll be a something similar.
Yeah, I believe, if they haven't sent it already, AMC will be sending it this week.
Long discussion about the ARP funds. You know, they can be used and, and one of the things, and I'm, I'm saying that to our two guys in the committee, another area is, you know, they talked about keeping our water clean and so forth, and it may be something where we can, um, take a look at our parks and look at all our park banks, people are using, they're washing away. Just saying it might be a possibility there. Then, um, the funds, oh, here it is. The local government ARP funding request is now open, which means our townships can now submit. Last time, we had a get-together of Sheila Hausman and Paul Feary. We brought all the townships in. Remember, it was over at the, the school.
We, we planned to do the same thing. We're waiting, we're waiting for the, the state's guidance to come out, and it does look like it has come out now. Yesterday, they had said that, uh, it has not been up yet, but it looks like it's up now.
Yeah, it actually, it's.
It's up now?
Yeah, my wife gave me the, she's a clerk, so she gave me.
Great.
Thing, it came out last Thursday.
Oh, damn.
That's all I had. Uh, oh, one last thing, I, I, I'm probably gonna register for the county government two oh one. I don't know what I wanna, I'd like to see what the agenda is, because there's about three things in there I wanna see. Or be part of, not the entire package, so.
Is that, that's another, one that, did that just come up?
That's the one at the, in St. Paul.
Intercontinental.
Where you have to attend?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
Is it, do they have much on there? A lot of times there's breakout, you can, like, choose, I don't know how that one's gonna be set up.
They got bullet points, that's all they got, so.
Oh, okay. A lot of times you could, you know, you can pick, I'm gonna go to this one, well, you know, you split it up in the groups, so.
Once again, it's three hundred and twenty-five dollars. You hate not to partake in all of it then because you spend the money, but.
That's, it'd be worthwhile for, I would, I would think. Two oh one, I'd be, I mean, the one oh one is the commissioner training, but for new commissioners, but two oh one, it's usually a little better discussion.
I enjoyed yesterday just meeting some folks, you know, and getting, you know, all of Benton County was there, of course, they weren't that far away. You know, but, um, it was nice to meet, meet some of those individuals. To find out that the Wright County County Administrator lives just down the road, probably from you, or Danny.
Real close to you. Campbell, Andersons.
So. That's all I got.
Uh, and I, I, I'll jump right into, uh, the AMC District Meeting too, cause yeah, I met Matt Freeman. He's part of AMC Committee and one of the things you do, uh, make connection with some of these people in conversation. I'm gonna try and get Lisa Grafantine from EDA to visit with Matt a little bit, cause there's some childcare, um, grants. And funny, that's something that AMC and the state is gonna address and, and we've talked about some of those things on EDA, so I'm gonna try and put those two together. So there's always some conversations that you have in person that you're not gonna have virtually. And opportunities to put some people together, so that was one thing I came out here. Um, yeah, and then I, my other question was just if we've been in contact with any of the townships or not.
No, yeah, no.
But, um, I will talk to my four.
Now that we have the, the guidance from the state, we're gonna look to set up that meeting, so.
But we, uh, I would encourage you to talk to your townships too, because in case they decide to turn it away right away. It's, you know, one and done, so we ought to at least, uh, take their time on that. Uh, other things I had, I had, uh, the Emergency Services Board Legislative Meeting, um, uh, of course, talk virtual versus in person is the big conversation right now, and we're pushing pretty hard to go back to live meetings there. Um, and we're gonna, looking at combining some committees, I've talked to, or subcommittees, talked to the sheriff on some of those things there. Uh, Central Minnesota has the largest subcommittee list out of all the emergency services meetings in the state. And, uh, we need to combine some of them, cause there's too much overlap is kinda the, the the theory there, so we're gonna look into that moving forward. Um, had the Judicial Ditch Seventeen meeting, um, got that hammered out. And, uh, then had a regular Emergency Services Board meeting where there was the virtual versus in person was brought up again and discussed at length. Uh, Central Minnesota Jobs and Training, um, they're getting, they're looking at some cuts. And, um, their deed is cutting about six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars from the dislocated workers program. Um, so that's gonna, um, definitely put an impact, have an impact on, on some of the services they can provide. And I know deed is also cutting dollars from, um, cares, uh, Grove City Care, which is the care program there, and that they've already been informed they need to operate. Their fiscal year is July one through, uh, June thirtieth, and their first quarter of this year, they will be operating it with no dollars. Care, you just, you're gonna have to get by in the first quarter for sure with no dollars, so. Um, so there's some things, and I think some of that goes back to, oh, a year and a half ago when they, the DHS and some of that, um, accounting debacle that they had down there, and they lost a whole pile of money and their shortfalls, and they're gonna have to find ways to, to make that up, so. Other than that, there was, they did mention AMC yesterday too, I did have a note here. Um, there's seventeen items on the special session that opened yesterday, and only four of those bills have mutual agreements that they feel will get taken care of with, uh, minimal discussion, and the rest are up in the air, so there's about thirteen items there that are up in the air. And I know, uh, talking to Dean Ernall, our housing concerns from Meeker County are tied to the bonding bill. He said if the bonding bill passes, the, the funds are in it to move forward with the Meeker Housing Project, but that's one of the thirteen, so.
You guys are both on those boards, right? You're involved with that.
Yeah, yeah. He's on the UCAP board and I'm working with UCAP through Eden Valley EDA, so.
Very good.
That's it. That's all I got.
Okay, for me, on June eighth, uh, we had the Joint Ditch Meeting up at the arena. And Steve, you chaired that, Beth and Paul and I attended. Uh, it was for reroute abandonment, redirect, all sorts of things happened with the Candy Meeker Joint Ditch Number Seventeen. Many landowners were present, there was nice discussion had, we learned a lot. It was decided, correct me if I'm wrong, that they were going to go ahead with the reroute and the cleaning, and the ditch authority would maintain authority. I capture that fairly correctly?
The ditch authority will maintain maintenance agreements through the impounded areas and through the exit of the three hundred and fifty foot spur, that exit.
The landowners were concerned that the decision-making stayed with local.
County level, county level versus the state.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and then the next day, uh, June ninth, over Zoom, the AIS, which is the Aquatic Invases Species Committee. Paul and I both sit on that. That was that Wednesday then, June ninth, I think I got that. Um, they're still waiting for an eighteen thousand dollar cleaning machine, which is supposed to be at the Minnebell Landing. Because of COVID and shipping and ordering, and I guess we're still waiting for that. Committee members asked if Ariana would go out and periodically check, because we hired a company to man these different stations and to hold them accountable for their hours, service, their communication to the boaters, et cetera. So we, we asked if she's doing some of that. We asked then if some of the inspectors could come back and make a report to the whole committee that was going to be looked into. Uh, starting to think about the twenty twenty-two budget, Ariana was asking for input on that. The next meeting was going to be July seventh. I have a meeting at one thirty today for the extension, county extension, it's going to be out at the Fairgrounds. This will be our first live get-together. Uh, then tonight, there is a Board of Appeals at six thirty, am I correct? Six thirty, the date, or the, uh, the time and the day is today. And then on Thursday, I have a library, Pioneer Land Library meeting coming up, so those are all coming up. And Paul, if you wanna add anything, Paul was also at the AIS, meeting over Zoom, and that's all that I have.
Well, for AIS, I am, we have a suggestion from probably a very, very strong individual on the committee, very, very sharp. And so it is something, uh, I'm gonna run by Andrew, in fact, I've been emailing up, typing in his name, to look at, because he's, he's recommending some bylaw changes and some things, so. You know, I think we all gotta be on board on this before we go, go forward, cause we're changing the structure of a committee. The order, the structure needs to change, so, but I don't wanna have us do it the wrong way.
No.
So, I don't know, I'd like to run it by you.
Seeking some counsel on that.
Um, Brandy too, so that we make sure that we don't do anything. Yeah, very good recommendations. This is a, he's in Steve's, Steve's area and, um, really a great committee member with his contributions, so very strong.
And we had a new committee member, forgot to mention that, Kristen Jaquely. She's a Minnebel resident and she joined as a new member of the AIS Committee, and that'll be very nice. Anything else folks want to add for their committee updates?
I've been asked to go to Hollywood Townships, um, meeting next week because of the recycling and DASL. I think we talked about that at a work session before. They are thinking about not doing it anymore because it's just such a pigpen up there. So, they asked me to come and, you know, so I'm gonna go find out what they're thinking. I know we pay for that, what was it again? I don't know. We did, we did it through accounts payable just a couple of times ago. I don't remember the figure.
Yeah, we quite a few asked the question tomorrow.
Same thing with Kingston.
Yeah.
We've had the same problems at times too.
It was actually in Kingston's billing and the accounts payable that we went into that discussion, but I.
We ran to then, ran into those same problems too, because we only had two bins, and then people just pick it up.
Well, they left a teller sitting out in front.
Oh, yeah, my address is everything, even though there's a big sign, but what do you, no one's there to read, you know.
We have the same thing at, at the state park, or the county park next to me. Folks will use it instead of purchasing garbage collection. They'll just drive through, it's such an easy drive-through too. Because you drive right up next to it as you pass it by, and it was just a, it was really, really bad a couple of weeks ago.
Do you represent the Darwin Hill area, or is that?
That's, that's bad.
That would be Beth within that. She has the Darwin Township.
Yes.
And that's, because there was some discussion too of the park over there, if we were going to continue to maintain the kind of a circle drive around public access toilets, things.
We talked about that at a couple of meetings ago, remember? The state wants us to take that over.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the rest of them.
So, but that hasn't been determined yet. Okay. Any other comments about?
Any idea, any idea on ARP if that hospital thing will count for us or not, or is that, how long is it?
Looking good. I'll fill you in after, but it's not looking good.
That's discouraging.
Yesterday, and I kind of asked you the question yesterday, I announced that the VA was going to get separate funds from the ARP. If we had to do any work to our VSL's office or anything like that, do you think that we could go to the VA and say, hey, do you guys have any grants or anything that you want to?
Yeah, it depends how the VA wants to spend that money. Possible.
I just thought it's something we might want to keep in mind, because I haven't been in his office, but you have indicated it's awfully small.
It's not huge. Yeah, it's not huge. That's for sure.
Just as far.
Schools are another one that we're going to be targeting.
Get an independent money.
And I think that was independently.
Yep, schools are getting independent money.
Which is, follows suit with what was presented to us through CARES Act, that none of the CARES Act dollars were targeted towards schools. And we didn't target, we got six school districts in Meeker County, and most of the other in Litchfield, all of them are on the border. So, they all encompass multiple counties, and we didn't have enough money to impactfully help any of them. And like Representative Erdol and Senator Newman both basically assured us that there would, you know, they knew at that time that there was enough talk federally that there would be separate pools of money for school districts, and it sounds like ARP is going to, there is a portion of ARP that will go directly to schools outside of us, of our fingertips, so.
Well, and our Cedar Mills Township, they gave money to Hector. That's geographically, that's kind of that spot for Hector's pool to help, because they got some repairs to be done. And I was at their annual meeting, and one of the people said, well, do that mean people from here go to Hector? And I was surprised. Evidently, there is a lot of folks that go from there to Hector for different things and the use of the pool, so. And I think the townships are going to be looking for a lot of guidance. They struggled last time with, what do we do with this? How do we do this? So.
Yep.
Well, most of your township clerks have full-time jobs, and this is outside their realm of expertise. But in essence, they're accountable to it. So, I mean, that puts it in a different frame of mind when you're put in that situation. I just soon have somebody else sign off on this than, than my signature. So, I think that was the biggest thing I heard from the clerks, is we just soon not have to deal with this, but.
That's kind of the same thing you heard around the field in a couple of the sites when they talked about road maintenance. You know, we're not full-time supervisors. We can't be doing a lot of this stuff. We don't have the time, and it is.
And then every two, three years, you're looking at a new contractor or losing a contractor and go find a new one. And just the main, just the management piece of it is a pain. I'll stop talking.
Thank you, Steve.
Did we get that in the record? Is that Julie?
Danny's got his keys sitting on the counter.
Did we put that in the records? That Julie thanked Steve for stop talking?
What I can't understand is why Danny didn't bring it up when we were talking about vulnerable adults. The remote situation that you have at your house, you don't get the remote.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I was thinking, to be honest. Amongst other things, that unfortunately is way down on my list.
Well, we had miscellaneous correspondence, and I don't know how many of you. We all come in and we, we get things correspondence, but I think Andrew kind of keeps us up to speed if we have something that needs to be addressed. I'll have to read these for next time. But then we have our monthly balances here, Andrew. If you need to mention anything from these, this is just our information.
Yep, just for information.
All right, that takes us through that. Anything else that should come before this board today? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll speak up and make them.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Anybody not coming at six thirty today?
I'm not going to be able to make it.
So, is the?
I don't usually get the invite.